We'll call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, also known as Flag Day. So thanks for anybody that put up a flag today. And the first order of business is roll call.
Okay, Tokowski. Here. Caravelo.
Here.
Raff.
Don't see him yet.
Okay. Hiley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Mayaski.
He just joined us.
Okay. Reeves.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
And we have Vinegas, apt and excuse, so I have, it appears, ten Alders present.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, there's a number of communications, but before we get into them, we do have one presentation, and we'll be, we'll let them go first, so they can get on their merry way. And the, uh, the chairperson for the Landmarks Commission, Todd Hubin, is here to do a presentation. And Rodney, if you could, uh, put up the slides, that would be awesome. Thank you so much. Oh, yes, Todd.
Okay, uh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, the Landmarks Commission, uh, has two plaques to award. Normally, these are awarded when you gain your landmark status. We are a little bit behind on our plaque offering. But it, but it's important, and, uh, our first, uh, oh, actually, could we use the other, show the other slide first?
Sure.
So our, our first plaque award is, is going to South School. The, the South School was built in nineteen hundred. It's one of Stoughton's treasures. Um, actually, in terms of, we, we have three old schools that are now, uh, beautiful apartment complexes or condominiums, uh, the South School being one of them. Well, I was trying to do a little bit of research to tell you a little bit about the South School, and when I was looking through the old newspaper, I could not find any mention of South School until the nineteen sixties. And that's because apparently nobody called it South School in the nineteen sixties. It was South Side. Stoughton had an East Side School, a South Side School, and a West Side School and Central, Central Building. Those were the four elementary schools in, uh, nineteen oh-nine, in the early nineteen hundreds. Anyway, it's a beautiful building. It's been designated as a landmark. The, uh, uh, South Side, or that's sorry, the South School Condo Association owns it. They've done a wonderful job of maintaining this building. And tonight, we have Don Dargel and Ray Karns from the South School Condo Association, and they're gonna receive the plaque. Thank you. Thanks. The second plaque is for the Chicago-Milwaukee and Saint Paul Railroad Depot. Bill Weber is obviously not in the room. I don't think he's online either. He was going to be on vacation with his wife, and they were going to get back in time for this meeting, but that may not have happened. So we will make sure the plaque gets to them. I, I would like to just say one thing about this building, though. It was built in eighteen eighty-five, and that might lead some people to believe that that's when the railroad came to Stoughton. But that's very, very much not the case. The railroad was one of the very first things in Stoughton. Uh, we had a railroad depot in the early eighteen fifties, when we were founded in eighteen forty-seven. So there was a railroad depot and a railroad here, really, before there was much of anything else. Why was it built in eighteen eighty-five? Because in July fifth of eighteen eighty-five, there was a major fire. It was the day after Fourth of July. Speculation was that it was people celebrating with fireworks. It burned down the depot, and it burned down ten tobacco warehouses and eight freight cars, all in that depot hill area, all in one big blaze. When I was searching, every paper in Wisconsin seemed to cover this, um, fire. The tobacco lost, um, they estimated to be one-third of the previous year's tobacco production burned up in that fire. It was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth, an amount of money that greatly eclipsed the value of any of the buildings. So it was a major deal. By October, the papers are reporting they're almost finished with the new depot. Uh, you notice it's a brick building. Um, it's, it's taken on some different shapes over the years. But in two thousand sixteen, the, the current owner of the building expressed an interest in landmarking that building, and, and he did. And, uh, the current owner is Bill Weber and, and his wife, and, and they were going to be here. But, uh, we will be sure that, uh, this plaque gets to them. They've done an excellent job of restoring the building just in the couple of years that they've owned it. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, that'll take us into, um, communications. Uh, we'll start with Alders. Any communications from Alders tonight? I knew you would have one. Alder Lagaki.
And I guess I'll go before, uh, Juneteenth and Pride Fest proclamations, but so, so happy that those are being read tonight. But actually, um, just wanted to let our city know. We are welcoming, uh, Ukrainian refugees this week. They are moving here to Stoughton. There's been a small group of, of concerned individuals who've started the Stoughton Resettlement Srap, Stoughton Resettlement Assistance Program. Rolls off the tongue, but there's a Facebook page, and there's been lots of nice community activity. This has been in the works for a while, and just wanted to make you aware that there are Ukrainian refugees moving here, and I know that even though Habitat for Humanity, you know, we've been really making some good strides. And so, um, hoping that Stoughton becomes an inclusive and a welcoming place of belonging for us all. And on that note, Juneteenth is this coming Sunday, and please come to the Corus Public House from twelve to four P M. for this celebration. It also happens to be Pride Month, and we are going to invite our new, uh, Stoughton residents who are from the Ukraine to come, though they're moving this week. Don't know how doable all this is, but I just wanted to make you aware of these good happenings, and if anybody wants to volunteer to scoop ice cream, let me know. Got a nice little graph here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications from Alders?
I have one, uh, which is a save the date for a fundraiser for the Stoughton area at Nordic Ridge, and I'll mention that at our next meeting, too.
All right, thank you. Any other communications? And I have a few that I'll go through quick. As Jean mentioned, it is, uh, Juneteenth. There is proclamation and a Pride Month proclamation in the packets. I'm hoping to read the Juneteenth one at the event. We'll see if the event organizers will allow me to do that. A couple other updates. At the next meeting, County Executive Parisia is scheduled to be here and give us an update on what's going on in the county. We have, uh, Chris Waldorf from True North Consulting is going to be here. They've recently submitted their site investigation report on the Riverfront Redevelopment Area to the D N R, so he'll be able to kind of give us an update on the process and how he expects that to go. Last night at the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission did approve the specific implementation plan for Emmy Roth, so that continues to move forward. And that's what I had on my list. Anybody else have anything? I know Dave's, uh, working on putting together a schedule for ARPA updates. I don't believe we have one tonight unless he had something, Dave. Um, we're trying to get a schedule of folks to come here and present their, uh, their requests, so you can expect that in the near future as well. So that's what we have for communications, and that would take us to the consent agenda. And there's a number of items in there. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So.
Second.
Motion by Jensen and a second by Alder Person Reeves. Would anybody like anything on the consent agenda acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. I forgot to mention, nobody did sign up for the public comment, so I didn't miss anybody. Uh, that takes us to new business, and we have R one twenty-three of twenty twenty-two, and this one comes from the Public Safety Committee. And, uh, let's see, is that Alder Person Jensen?
Oh gee.
Uh, let's see if I can find it here.
Yep, that would be, uh, R one eighteen twenty twenty-two resolution confirming the mayor's appointment. No, that's not it. That's consent agenda, excuse me.
R.
One twenty-three of twenty twenty-two authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and special event license for Stoughton Opera House Friends Association for the Catfish Music Festival. I would move for approval.
A second?
All right, there's a motion and a second. Alder Person Jensen?
Yes, we, uh, met on, uh, Public Safety Committee met on five twenty-five, and, um, found that there were no issues. Chief didn't have any issues with it. It's always been a, a well-run operation, and so we were recommending approval.
All right, and I believe that, uh, Director Brem, Bill, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
What would you like to tell us about your event?
Uh, well, there's gonna be balloons and sunshine and lots of, uh, families. It's, uh, it's gonna be, it's really quite something to try to pull it back from, uh, from the grave, so to speak, after three years, so, uh... But I think it's gonna go off great. I don't see any major differences between this year and previous year. Full, uh, event over the course of the weekend, so, you know, I'd recommend coming down and taking a peek at least one of the evenings. We got some good stuff coming, so.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Okay, next item is approval of the Riverwalk Change Order Number One, and this one came from the Finance Committee earlier tonight. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, R one twenty-four twenty twenty-two is the approval of the Riverwalk Change Order Number One, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, or anything you wanna review? Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, this is, uh, just a modification to the, to the deflector that is already out there. Um, this, uh, puts a stair, a terracing stair in step into it. That should give a little bit, uh, easier access and a little bit more usability. Um, the additional cost would be about twenty thousand dollars, but we will get credit for, uh, some materials not used, so, um, out of pocket then is about, uh, seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Glenn?
Um, sure. So the river, or the current deflector, uh, this is a question that was brought up at Finance Committee meeting, it's not really clear, and, um, uh, my memo is that it's, it's located between where the bridge will be and then out of the tail race on the redevelopment side. And the purpose for the... Really to get interaction with the river. They're really popular with fishermen, um, viewing areas, taking, for people taking pictures and, uh, just looking at the river, and also, uh, people even getting in and out of the river. So when Gary Lacy and Mason Lacy were on site for the construction oversight of this actually getting constructed, um, they made a field observation that it would be difficult for people with mobility issues to actually use the, the terracing, that's the stone wall terracing that was in the original plan, to actually get down to the current deflector. So they proposed a twenty-foot-wide, uh, cut stone staircase, um, and then, after we got the, the price back, we actually reduced it down to ten feet wide, which would be centered on the node and, uh, be half the size and, um, be the same functionality as a twenty-foot-wide one, so, um, and like Alder Schumacher said, that the cost is twenty thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars, and the engineer estimates that there'll be about a thirty-seven hundred dollar credit, uh, based on, uh, materials not used, which is a stone wall terracing.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Lagaki?
It increases accessibility for people with mobility issues. I'm just kind of wondering who those people you might have in mind, and, um, does this address safety as well?
Um, yeah, I would say it's, it would especially help, uh, children, um, get down to the actual river instead of trying to get down one-foot terracing, um, and also just people general use, I think, would be increased by, um, the, the, the stone staircase. You know, as far as safety goes, yeah, I would, I would assume that it would improve safety, because it would be less of a, less of a, you know, depth of, you know, step or, you know, when you're going down or up to the current deflector.
Thanks, Dan.
I have a question.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Um, so, this is for mobility issues, for accessibility. Do we have a, uh, any way for people in wheelchairs to get down to that level?
No, they, they determined that there wasn't enough, uh, room between the trail and then the actual current deflector, um, to have the, that five percent slope and having a ramp down to there. So that, this was the next best scenario.
All right, is there a follow-up?
I'm, I'm thinking about this, um...
Okay. Other other areas?
Litigation down the road.
Are there other areas, Dan, where, uh, people will be able to get down to?
So when the tail race gets filled in, um, there's going to be, uh, there's a, there's a trail that goes down to the, where the tail race is, that's gonna be filled in, and then there's a, you know, there's a five percent slope all the way down to the actual river edge.
Okay. As long as we're providing it somewhere on that, in this section.
All right, good point. Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Jensen?
I just wanted to point out that it's coming out of the contingency fund for this project.
Yeah, Dan, this is paid for, there was contingency built into the plan, right?
Right, there's a hundred and thirty-one thousand, um, in contingency, where the contingency would be used to fund this.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next item is one, R one twenty-five. This one also came out of Finance. Alder Person Schumacher.
Right, uh, R one twenty-five twenty twenty-two authorizing and directing proper city official to write off twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one delinquent personal property tax bills that have proven to be uncollectible totaling one thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, these come up periodically, and it is, uh, all the efforts are put forth to, to get collection on these, but, um, sometimes they just run into dead ends. Um, so this is the, the amount to write off.
All right, any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I think it should be noted, though, that, uh, in the, in the agenda here, it shows it as a three-o vote, and we should, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Just note that for, for the record.
That motion carries. Uh, we want to make sure that on the Finance Committee recommendations that are on here, it should be four zero. Uh, it was three plus the mayor, so it should have been four from the committees on these. But that motion does carry with that change. Um, next item is R one twenty-six, and this one here is coming from the Finance Committee as well. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, uh, R one twenty-six twenty twenty-two authorize contract with municipal advisor regarding tax incremental district number six boundary expansion. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, yep, this one will have to be, uh, up augmented by, to the four-o. Also, um, this one is the, uh, to adjust the, the boundaries and the borders on TIF six, uh, that will accommodate the, um, Emmy Roth plant. Um, this was put together by Ellers, so, uh, their fee on reassessing that was sixteen thousand five hundred.
Anything you want to add, Director Ehlinger?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay. All right, so this is basically for the TIF district out on Glacier Moraine, as it says in, uh, in, uh, whereas is, and the idea is to expand the border so we can capture that increment. Um, that TIF district has been basically underwater from day one, so this would be, you know, a real shot in the arm to, to help keep it off the tax rule, basically, so we don't have to, um, to tax for it. We'll be using, uh, the, uh, the increment as it comes in to, to help pay some of the debt we've incurred in that district. Any questions or comments? Uh, Alder Person Hunt?
Do we have any idea what the Emmy Roth, uh, inclusion will generate for TIF?
Uh, well, the, the value of the building is estimated to be around thirty-five million. That doesn't mean that's what's gonna assess that, so I think as we get closer, we can maybe have that conversation, um, unless, Dave, if you have any insight on how that would be, I, I don't know off the top of my head.
That, the number you gave was the last I heard. Just with the timing of it, the assessed value will be, uh, done January of twenty-three, which means that, uh, it won't be until twenty-four that we can start getting any tax increment revenue.
Right, and it probably won't. They're, they're planning on, uh, having a, a groundbreaking the first week in August, so realistically, even in January, it's only gonna be partially built, so I'm not really sure. They'll just do the value at that point, January first, right?
Correct.
So we won't really capture the full value until twenty-four. Assuming that...
Uh, twenty-five, actually.
Yeah, assuming it's completed in twenty-three and assessed in twenty-four.
But it looks like the, uh, TIF off of the Emmy Roth will bring us above water on TIF six.
Yeah.
That is the hope, yes.
Yeah, as well as anything else that might come into that, but right now, that's really the only thing we have going, so that, that's the hope. Any other questions or comments? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Uh, R one twenty-seven also comes out of Finance. Alder Person Schumacher.
R one twenty-seven twenty twenty-two authorize the Stoughton Fire Department to apply for a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources grant for wildlife or wild land and brush gear for budget year twenty twenty-three. So move.
Second.
Second by Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, again, we'll have to adjust the vote count on that from three to four. Um, this is similar to, uh, grant applications that the fire department has used for, for the same type of, of gear and that. They get a fifty-fifty split on the cost of these materials that they're looking to get, um, so of fourteen thousand, then they're, then they're only responsible for just the half of that amount, seven thousand.
Any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Caravelo?
I just have one quick question about this. In, in reading this, and since this is a, something that is in the news, uh, recently, it, under the whereases of this, it says it includes the addition of a foam system to the twenty-twenty brush truck. And I am curious what that foam is, if that's...
I know what it's not.
You know what it's not?
Not PFAS. I know that much.
Okay.
But I don't know what it is.
That works for, that works for me. Knowing what it's not suffices to answer my question.
Because I think that's question was asked somewhere along the line. That's like the million-dollar question, because there's a lot of that stuff that needs to be disposed of yet, and nobody can come up with affordable way of doing it, so...
I believe you said that, uh, we have some ourselves here, that they just don't have...
We do, and we've been talking to our legislators about trying to help us find a way to pay to get rid of it, because that's the best thing to do.
Maybe there's somebody who's a scientist, and there's a book...
These are hard to break down. Hence why they're a problem in the environment.
Hence why they're called forever. Those pesky things. Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. We're gonna skip to item thirteen and then come back for the other two. Item thirteen is, uh, R one twenty-nine of twenty twenty-two, and this one came from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
I thought you were gonna give me a rest in between.
Oh, no, you're on a roll here.
Got it. R one twenty-nine twenty twenty-two is a resolution for collateral assignment of agreement for subdivision improvements of Kettle Park West Phase Two.
Second by Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
Uh, this came through Finance earlier tonight. Uh, this is essentially a, uh, letter of credit that, uh, the K P W developer is using, um, for their Phase Two, uh, to secure the improvements that they are working on there. Um, they've used one community bank. This is really similar to, uh, language in everything that we've had of this same type of letter of credit agreement that we've had prior.
All right, thank you. Attorney Dragley?
I can just elaborate a little bit further on that. Um, so, um, yes, one community bank is providing both a letter of credit and additional fund, financing, additional, an additional loan to finance this next phase of development. The city has already, uh, in an earlier process, approved a collateral assignment of earlier agreements between the city and Kettle Park West. This is in addition, there's a new development agreement now for this next phase, and the lender has requested that the city also collaterally assign that agreement to the lender. The reason for the collateral assignment is that if the developer fails to perform and the bank, um, um, isn't being paid, uh, the bank has the ability to notify the city essentially that it's taking over the development and, um, invoke this assignment of the agreements, and then the developer would step in, the bank would step into the developer's shoes with respect to, um, uh, finishing the, the development, if the bank chooses to do that. So the bank just wants to make sure that all of the development agreements between the city and the developer, that, uh, the city has consented to the developer's collateral assignment of those agreements to the bank, which developer needs to do to convince the bank to lend the money to do the work, which we would like the bank to do.
All right. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, we'll go back to item number eleven. Eleven and twelve are kind of related. What we wanted to do is kind of go through the sidewalk policy. Uh, we're gonna let Director Abear kind of summarize that. Um, it's that time of the year again where we're doing road construction, and we thought it might be a good idea just to kind of go through the process a little bit, especially if there's somebody that hasn't been through this before, and then, uh, lead into the item number twelve. And then, uh, lead into the item number twelve. Um, and item number twelve, we do have a potential to go into closed session as needed. We sent that notice out, um, last night, so we would have the flexibility if, uh, we choose to exercise it. So, uh, Director Abear, uh, whenever you're ready, you can kind of walk us through, uh, what you have here.
Sure, no problem. So, um, in twenty twenty, uh, the city did adopt a new sidewalk policy that we, um, follow. And basically, the, in the section one, the preamble, uh, it talks about, you know, the walkability of the community. And that's, that's one of the things that the council, uh, really wanted to see when we do construction, uh, projects, is that we provide connectivity and, uh, and have a walkable, walkable community. Uh, so I'll jump down to, uh, section four. Really, that talks about street reconstruction and infill the sidewalk, uh, policy. Uh, so basically, all streets being considered for major reconstruction, uh, curb and gutter will be planned for sidewalks as follows. And so one of the topics that we've been talking about is, is Rose Street, which is a, a full reconstruct. Uh, so basically, section, or number one, is both sides of all collector, uh, travel, traffic level streets, uh, would receive sidewalks on, on both sides. Um, identified as key routes to schools, uh, identifies key routes to parks. Um, both sides of the street would get sidewalks if the route with identified heavy foot traffic, such as the downtown area. Um, that number five, uh, whether to include sidewalks on either side or both sides, existing local street without existing sidewalks shall be turn, be, shall be determined on a case-by-case basis after consideration of the following factors. Uh, so ADA accessibility, available right-of-way space. Um, and Ronnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's thirty-three feet of right-of-way in this roadway on Rose Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, so that's about half of our normal right-of-way space. Uh, we also consider vehicular and pedestrian traffic volume. Uh, connectivity to existing sidewalks, which on this stretch, there's currently, uh, partial sidewalks on the west side of the street. Uh, so this would offer connectivity throughout that corridor. Uh, excessive cost due to physical, physical characteristics such as, uh, retaining walls, uh, proximity to parks, schools, churches, and our highly traveled destinations. Uh, environmental impacts such as trees and wetlands will be considered. Um, then the length of, uh, dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs, which this is not. Uh, so the repairs to existing sidewalks will follow the city's sidewalk replacement program, which this is a full reconstruct, so this really does not, uh, apply. And then the, uh, section five is a sidewalk installation approval process, uh, which basically, section A through, uh, G is really budgetary based and CIP related, uh, which this project was a CIP item, um, and approved by council in November of, of twenty twenty-one for twenty twenty-two. Um, and then, uh, uh, the, the website does have all of our CIP, uh, projects listed on it. Um, and then from there, we take the projects to, uh, public works. Uh, unfortunately, the, it did, was scheduled for December of twenty twenty-one, and we did not have a quorum, uh, that day. Um, and so the, the work or the, um, design work did commence on that. And in May of this year, uh, we did bring it back to the committee, um, to look at the deviation from the sidewalk policy to construct on both sides of the road. Um, and reason being is that on the east side of the road, there's some utility concerns. As I stated before, the public right-of-way really was not wide enough to accommodate for the roadway and then sidewalks on both sides. And since there was already sidewalk on the west side of the street and no utility conflicts, uh, we elected to construct, uh, the west, construct sidewalk on the west side of the street. Um, unfortunately, there was some, uh, tree concerns, um, in that area. And we did, uh, send letters to the residents and had a meeting, uh, with them to discuss the, the issues with the trees. Um, at that time, uh, I thought that we had, uh, an, an understanding of what, uh, may need to happen to the trees, specifically at two hundred and two oh eight, uh, Rose Street. Uh, and unfortunately, we, we did receive a letter from, uh, one party that was wanting compensation for the removal of the trees, uh, that I think we can get into at, at the next agenda item. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the current sidewalk policy or what we, we saw, um, at, uh, two hundred Rose Street. I believe, Ronnie, you have a, a picture as well, um, of that area.
Excuse me, Brett?
Yep.
Um, would the Rose Street, uh, project, um, would numbers one, two, three, and four apply to Rose Street?
So, good, great question. Um, possibly. Since it does lead to, uh, Main Street or fifty-one, um, that has a highly traveled corridor, and to provide that connectivity, it is not a collector-level street. One could argue that it may be a, a route to, to school. Uh, but it, it definitely does, uh, provide for that connectivity by adding the sidewalks at least on one side. But one could argue that sidewalks may need to be placed on both sides because of the proximity to, to Main Street.
It may, may be worth just highlighting, item number five of the policy indicates whether to include sidewalk on either or both sides of existing local streets without existing sidewalks. Recall, there is existing sidewalk on the west side of Rose Street for approximately two-thirds of that, that stretch. Uh, the intent was to really infill and, and create a continuous path down the west side, um, in, in that area. Here's the pictures you're referring to, I believe, Brett, if you wanted to use the.
Thanks, thanks, Ray. So this, this is a picture of two hundred Rose Street. So this is a picture of the, the Siberian elm, um, at the, the foreground. Um, so this tree is really the one that's in question. Um, as you noticed, the, the root flare or the root collar, um, is rather elevated. And, uh, during excavation, we would have to excavate into, um, this, the ground, basically nine to twelve inches, somewhere in there. Um, that string line represents one, uh, foot above the top of the sidewalk that's planned to be put in. And then we'd be excavating, um, approximately nine inches below that for a total of twenty-one inches, uh, below that line of excavation. Uh, one thing to note is that the majority of the structural root, um, of these trees is approximately twelve inches below the surface. Um, so our fear is that if we sever these roots, especially this close to the root flare, root collar, that the structural integrity of that tree, uh, may be in question. So when we look at these things, it definitely is a, a judgment call, uh, in consultation with our, our city forester, um, about the survivability of the trees. Uh, the last thing we want to do is, is take any trees down. Um, we, we definitely work very hard to install trees and, and maintain our, our urban forest. Um, sometimes when these trees encroach into the public right-of-way, uh, we do have to remove them. Um, as I stated, we, we did talk with the property owner. Uh, we told them that if it does need to come down, that the city would pay for it at, uh, the city's cost and also work with them to install a different species of tree, um, in its place, uh, in a, in a more appropriate location. Um, and as I stated, I thought we were, um, in agreement on that and, um, and went a different direction that we'll get into in the next agenda.
Commissioner, could I?
Sure, go ahead, Brett.
A couple of questions, uh, Brett. Uh, first, uh, does that, uh, um, string line there also, is that also the boundary of the right-of-way or not?
Within about an inch or so. So I, it's, it's at the back of the, it signifies the back of the sidewalk. For placement. And, and one thing to note too is we, we definitely discussed moving the sidewalk. Uh, basically, a zero setback, um, along the curb line. Uh, unfortunately, in that, that bottom picture, they, they do have two driveway, driveways and two driveway aprons at this location that they want to keep. And so if we moved the sidewalk down towards the roadway, it would be basically going through the driveway apron, uh, which would not meet ADA, uh, considerations for slope, across slope, which is two percent. Um, so that was really out of the question. Uh, we had talked about other types of, of, uh, pavement types. Um, unfortunately, because it is a driveway apron, we have to have a certain thickness to accommodate for a vehi, a vehicle to drive over, which is basically six inches of concrete. Uh, so we, we did talk about some per, permeable pavements and things like that. Uh, aggregate was, was brought up, however, that does not meet ADA, um, considerations long-term. In the short term, it, it certainly does, but long-term, it does not. Um, so we, we've talked about different options that we may have to, to save the tree. Um, but going, putting the sidewalk in the place that it is will compromise that tree to the point where we're not sure we want to take on the risk of leaving it and having it potentially fall, and then we have a liability under our hands.
Let me ask one more question. What if the city decided to not put a sidewalk on that side of the street? So there's no sidewalk there. But you still have to put in the street and the curb and gutter.
Yeah, we, we basically wouldn't be following our, our policy. Um, and of course, that's totally up to the, the council to deviate from policy. Um, again, we're, we're following the, the policy, um, and the, the charge of the, the council.
So my question is though, if, if the council decides to not follow the policy and just do the street project and not the sidewalk, in your judgment, how would the elm tree factor into, into the project then?
So there's also a consideration of construction. So the, the curb and gutter also, uh, will be placed, um, at a far, a greater depth than the sidewalk. And there is also a potential, because of the narrow right-of-way, that we're going to be severing roots, uh, feeder roots that, that feed the tree. Um, it may cause a premature decline and due to construction in it itself. Rodney, am I sure if you have that profile handy or not that shows that?
I'll pull up the profile, but I think you, you also had highlighted earlier, there's the driveway apron that would have to be cut in, um, that would, would be in the terrace and up to the property line area as well. Um, and there's one just to the south. So there's two properties that have, um, driveway aprons on both sides of this elm tree. Uh, this particular property, two hundred, actually, has two driveway aprons with one farther in the north, north side as well. Yes, just one second and I'll share the, the profile.
And, and my question, Brett, is, you know, as I understand it, you have determined that the elm tree presents a public safety risk, um, in terms of leaving that tree standing, um, before you have to go in and do the excavation work, at least with respect to the sidewalk. What if the sidewalk is taken out of the equation? Are you then, uh, are you, what is your judgment? Or have you reached a judgment at this point about whether you could safely proceed with the street reconstruction project? No sidewalk, while the tree remains?
So when Ronnie brings up the, the profile, um, so where, where Ronnie's cursor, he rides humor, the cursor to the, the curb and gutter. So you can see that the excavation of the curb and gutter is much deeper than where the sidewalk is, the sidewalk excavation. So the, if the, the sidewalk was gone, you know, obviously, we wouldn't be digging into the, the root flare or cutting into the root flare. However, the roots still do extend, um, out into the, the current roadway, under the roadway, which we would be digging into. Um, the, the dashed line, I believe, is the, the current, um, uh, surface. And so you can see that we'll be digging in, um, about a foot, roughly.
Yeah, and I'm gonna put you on the spot, Brett, sorry to do it. Are you willing to do that with the tree still standing? Or do you believe that we would still need to remove the tree, even if the sidewalk is not being installed? Or is that something you do not have an opinion on at this time?
So that, that is one of the toughest calls that we have to make during these situations because currently, I can't see underneath the ground. Um, I just know that the, the root structure itself will be compromised. So we, we definitely look at how far away the, the excavation is going to be from the, the, the tree itself. Uh, structurally, can it, can it handle that? Um, as we start to excavate and cut into roots, that the tree could stand through construction and, and it may fall this winter. Um, the biggest thing that we're trying to do is reduce risk to not only the general public, but also the adjacent property owners, which are the, the owners.
So the, the reason this item is on the agenda first, the policy, is to give the council the opportunity, uh, in the light of the current circumstances, to revisit the policy and decide whether you think the policy remains appropriate, both in terms of, um, what the standards are, what factors are to be considered, and the process. Um, and the process, as you heard, was, um, I, I think the final decision from policymakers here was made by the Public Works Committee. They had the.
Sorry? So I, I will admit to one thing that we did not follow. And on the very end, uh, section K and L, uh, basically says that needs to go back to council for final approval.
I, I need to, I need to step in at this point in time, uh, make a safe statement. I was gonna save this for, uh, closed session. But as Chair of the Public Works Committee, um, this is something I wanted to bring up at our next meeting. When this came to us, it was already locked in. We were given it and basically, uh, where it said, do you want this on this side of the street or, or not? Because of the fact that we've already done the engineering on it and we really can't change it, it'll cost us a heck of a lot of money. If it would have been me before, if this would have, if this project would have came before us earlier, before it can, before the engineering went through, I don't believe I would have put it, the sidewalk on that side of the street. I would have voted against it. But we pretty, we were pretty much locked in because of the fact that all the engineering was done. To redo it would have cost how much?
To re, to move the sidewalk to the other side?
No, to, to, to re-engineer. To redesign, to get it to the other side. What would it cost?
I, I don't know.
Can't tell you.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the point. The point is you brought it, you brought it to the committee for us to rubber stamp and then I, I, I kind of took a little bit of umbrage to that. And it's something I was gonna bring up at the next, uh, Public Works meeting. This whole process, you know, y- yeah, we were, we didn't have a meeting on, uh, in November. It was decided upon by staff to do this, and it did not come back to us again for four and a half months, five months.
I believe it came to the city council.
There, there wasn't a, a meeting in, in April, I believe, or March, March.
My point is we had time, we had time to, to come back at this before. It, it was locked in. And basically, that's what it is. You locked in this project, you brought it to the committee, the committee really had no other choice but to, but to approve it. And, and, and I'm, it, it's, it's sticking in my craw like you wouldn't believe right now because of this. And I, and listening to you, I know you did your, your due diligence with the homeowners and you, you followed process and you did all those things. But we shouldn't be sitting here having this, this discussion right now if this would have gone to the committee at the right time. And that's all I'm gonna say at this point in time.
Well, I, I think it did go to the committee at the right time, but unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum that night.
No, you didn't bring it at the right time, period.
At some point, you know, we have to, you know, get council approval, which we did, and get it out the bid so we can get the work done.
Can I, can I just respond? Sorry, can I just respond to, to the moving the sidewalk to the other side? So hypothetically, did move the sidewalk to the other side, the roadway would shift then to the, to the west. So we'd still have some issues with the tree and also driveway aprons. So the issue really doesn't go away, things just shift the other way.
We still have the issue with the trees themselves. So this is the only place in the city where we do reconstruction on trees, where the tree roots are going into the, into the street, where.
tree roots are going into the, into the street where, but in other places, they don't fall over. I know this is a Chinese elm, but there are a lot of other trees out there that have had reconstruction done on them where the trees didn't fall down. I'm kind of surprised.
The biggest thing is the, the right of way width. So by us putting the sidewalk in or moving the street to the west, basically we're going to be cutting closer to the tree than other trees and other, other reconstruction projects. So the whole thing would, would flip flop basically. If you look at the, the picture in front of you, the sidewalk would go to the other side and the curb and gutter would go to the west. There's only so much right of way that we have to, to work with in this area. So basically they would, it would flip flop and the curb and gutter would technically be lower than the sidewalk. So it would be a bigger issue than what it is currently, to be quite frank.
All the person Legaki?
This is a dilemma. And I'd like to just hearken back to, I think it was Mayor Swadley or maybe it was Attorney Dregney, who were talking about the policy that we developed. And I think the policy that we have is much better than what was before because it allows for some flexibility and considerations. And so I'm willing to say I think we have a successful policy right now. I'm a member of Public Works and I was not at the May meeting. And I'm willing to share a little bit of anecdotal information of not long after the meeting. I heard from some citizen members and just about the case and trying to understand it. And I traveled over to the residence to just go see. I'm a gardener, I care about things, I like trees a lot. And, you know, it was interesting to just go look at the, at the, at the property. And the homeowner saw us there and clearly identified, I just wanted to see. And I, I just simply listened to them. And, you know, the thing that we're not talking about, I mean, we're talking about these particular decisions around how far we're going to cut in and what are the right of ways and which side. But there's a sustainability issue that I, that I haven't heard come up, that I'd just like to make, that's what I heard, is that these trees, if you look at that house that faces east and a long sun day, look where those trees are. And, you know, when people have clear budgets and how much money things cost and you're about to make a huge environmental change to their existing property, that comes down to monthly budgets as well. And so I just wanted to put out that I think that this is a multi-layered issue. And, you know, there's part of me that looked and saw that started sidewalk and it totally makes sense on this side to continue it. And yes, when I was there, I was surprised at how close to Main Street that is. So I'm not saying I have an answer, I'm not saying I'm leaning anywhere. I'm just adding to the layers for us to think about. But I'm willing to say I, I like our sidewalk policy and how we use it and how we apply it right now is key.
All right, thank you. I have all the person, Haley and then President Hirsch.
So this is kind of about the next, the next topic, but is the agreement on the agenda something that the property owners have agreed to in fact, in principle? Or is this directing city staff to negotiate on this agreement?
Well, we're going to learn more about that on the next agenda item and frankly, I don't know the status of that right now. My colleague Isaac is on the call and he can update us. We, we thought we had an agreement or an understanding as of Friday last week. We were informed, I believe yesterday afternoon, that we did not have an agreement. There's been continuing discussions and drafting today, but I don't know as I sit here right now where we stand. So we're going to learn more about that when we get to the next item.
Did you have a follow-up Ben?
I also wanted to ask, the fact that the, there's a partial sidewalk on this block, presumably it was installed within the lifetime and maturity of this tree. And this tree may have factored into the, the non-installation of sidewalk on the whole block. I'm wondering if there's anything historically with this, this tree and this property and the sidewalk that we should be aware of?
I think, I, I can speak to the, maybe a little background. This actually is a rural cross-section. At, at one point, this was actually a township area. And so at least one section of the sidewalk was installed when a new home was put in. You might recall, we have an ordinance essentially says if you put in a new home, you got to put in a new sidewalk. So they fit one in, in front of their home, adjacent neighbor did the same. When, when Associated Bank First Federal was constructed, they built theirs down to the property line, the 200 Rose Street that doesn't have it, that's underneath these trees. That would have been one of the legacy properties that, that existed from probably when it was in the town of Dunkirk. So there was no sidewalk ever fit into that area at that point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And President Hirsch?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Brett and, and Public Works for actually, for Brett to explain the situation and what's going on. You, you sought to try to solve this problem. I do appreciate that because I, I didn't know that that was actually happening. But to also go on to Tom's issue and that, yes, it was brought to council, but council was not privy to the tree situation when it was brought to council. Usually, yeah, I mean, these diagrams are great, but, you know, we didn't really understand that one, that this is like over a hundred year old Siberian elm that has withstood, you know, Dutch elm's disease and all this, that it's, you know, it's a rarity to actually have an elm and that we're looking to cut it down, which, you know, doesn't sit with me very well. And yes, that weird sidewalk in the middle of that block is kind of, you know, like the old Sarah Palin, it's a sidewalk to nowhere because it's just stuck in the middle of the road. I guess I just, I know, I'm not going to say anymore because we need to go into closed session, but I just want to thank Public Works for looking for alternatives, but also kind of disappointed that it's taken this long for this problem to come to council or for council actually to be aware of it. That should have been done a while ago. So that's why we put this on the agenda and we had you go over the, the policy and everything. And I guess, I think I will save my comments when we move into the next section.
Sure, thank you. And I certainly understand the frustration, but as Brett mentioned, you know, we thought we had an agreement with the property owners. The, the saving of the elm tree was never really discussed until recently. And once it became an issue for the homeowner, and they weren't even trying to save the tree, that wasn't their issue, then we brought it back.
I think we need to go into closed session?
Well, I guess the question before we go into closed session is if there's a desire to have the committee relook at the policy. As long as we're having a discussion, that's one thing we could do is we could, you know, consider, you know, given the, the committee direction to look at the policy again, or to basically say, you know what, we're okay with it as is. It does give us the flexibility to do these on a case-by-case basis. And I think that's what we're trying to do tonight.
All the person Jensen?
I agree. I think, I think I agree with Jean that the policy is well-written. I think it's the timing and making, the only thing I would change with the policy is if there is something that is highlighted that, you know, like we had a couple of years ago with McKinley Street and Taft Street with respect to trees and now Rose Street with respect to trees that that gets kind of flagged and brought to council as soon as possible for discussion.
All right, thank you for the feedback.
Can I just add one thing Mayor, just, just in the group? Before we go into closed session, you can actually see on the plan set here, the original design really intended for us to protect these trees. You can see the note here. We intended to protect those trees. The designers intended to protect those trees. There was more of an assessment by the forestry and our team to really evaluate that more closely when the, when the snow went away truthfully to some degree, to allow us to, to really understand how the design might impact that. That was our charge to try to protect those trees. So I apologize for the timing, but it certainly wasn't because we weren't trying to protect them.
All the person Jensen?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think the policy does give us the flexibility that we need. It was, a lot of thought was going into rewriting that and I'm, I'm satisfied with the way it is.
All right. Anybody else have any comments about the policy? All right, Karen Dunn. So the next item is R128. And I don't know if we really need to do the, a motion or just go into closed session. What do you think Matt?
It wouldn't need to be a motion, the, to go into closed session, just to set the stage for discussion of whether you wanted to go into closed session, what the legal basis would be. What I expect we're going to discuss in closed session would be the status of our negotiations with the property owners relating to this matter. And to get direction from the council on how you want us to proceed with respect to those negotiations and entering into any agreement with the property owners. So on the legal basis for that would be that the city does, the council has the right when developing, negotiating or bargaining strategy. And you can do that in closed session if you feel that's necessary or appropriate. We may also, I may also advise the council about potential litigation and how the steps we're taking now are intended to, you know, address potential litigation and what kind of strategy we would expect to use to help navigate that process. So that would be the other legal basis for closed session is to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy to be adopted in litigation in which you either are or likely to become involved. And we, we certainly do have a possibility of litigation here. So those would be the two things that I would expect us to discuss. And those are both things that are legal for you to discuss in closed session. So if you feel like, if you believe that, that it is appropriate to, to move to closed session now, there should be a motion to move into closed session. There would need to be a roll call vote. And the ground, the basis for the closed session would be as, as I just described.
All right, who wants to make that motion?
How move we go into closed session?
Is there a second?
Second by all the person Jensen. So we're going in the closed session based on the description that we just had from the city attorney?
That would be, I think, the record clearly reflects that.
Okay. You can catch up with Candy if we need the...
Yeah, it's, the, and the statutory bases are set forth in the agenda, 19.851E and 1F, litigation and bargaining reasons.
Need to have a roll call.
You have to have a roll call vote.
So when you're ready Candy, you can do a roll call vote.
Yes. Travello?
Hi.
Haley?
Hi.
Hirsch?
Hi.
Jensen?
Yes.
Legaki?
Hi.
Viaski?
Hi.
Reeves?
Hi.
Hunt?
Hi.
Schumacher?
Hi.
Takal ski?
Hi.
That's 10 i's.
All right, we'll get the place ready for closed session.
I'll grab the door if you don't mind. I'm just going to get my...
Give me two max.
All right. So we're going to take a couple of minute break here while we're getting ready and then we'll...